Likewise. That's all I had. Alenda or Shania, any information?
Nope.
Nope, nothing to add.
Kristin, did you have information to share?
I just wanted to thank you for re-upping on the planning board and sticking with it. I think we got your renewal before the board at the first meeting in August coming up. So thankful for that, especially given that we're down to three. So if anyone's watching, still looking for more planning board members.
It's a good time.
Yes. The, there is one amendment to the agenda that was requested. Basically, the second application had asked to be tabled, but they were not ready to come before you tonight. And just as a notice, we do have a staff review committee meeting on Monday at 3:30 to review some minor changes at the Avesta Meadow View site. They're trying to address some resident concerns about parking and deal with a couple of other things. So that is next up on the docket.
Okay. And I did receive a letter regarding that, say, an email, sorry, earlier today. I haven't had time to read it yet, but...
Oh, okay, if you want to forward it along.
Yeah, I'm not sure who it was sent to yet. I just saw that it came out.
Okay.
Yeah, I did as well.
Okay, I don't think that came to me, so if you could please send it along.
After the meeting. Okay. So let's move on to new business then. So our first and only item tonight is a pre-application conference. This is a request by Miller Refrigeration Company, Inc., represented by Gore Palmer Engineers for Planning Board Pre-Application Conference for a proposal to expand the light manufacturing use on their 4.03 plus or minus acre parcel at 93 Lewiston Road at tax map 28 lot 25-25-02 in the commercial and light manufacturing overlay, LMOD zoning districts. This proposal is subject to major site plan amendment review, conditional use review, and LMOD standards. Welcome to take an opportunity to introduce your project to us and then we can give you whatever guidance you seek. And I know staff provided some comments in the memo that we can talk about later as well.
Sure. Yes, thank you, members of board. My name is Caleb Barasa, project engineer with Gore Palmer here on behalf of Miller Refrigeration. And Jesse Miller is here with us this evening, also happy to answer any questions as well. We're here for a pre-application conference, so just looking to get some good preliminary feedback from you folks this evening. We've certainly tried to provide as much information as we can in this packet. You probably noted we provided in addition to the pre-application conference standards, the site plan standards, Good Neighbor standards, light manufacturing overlay district standards, and then the conditional use standards. So the project we're here to talk about tonight is an expansion on an existing business, which is the Miller Refrigeration business located at 93 Lewiston Road. That building is about an existing 5,000 square foot structure. It was originally built in 1992. Since that time, there was an expansion that was approved in 1997. I believe about another 2,000 square foot expansion bringing up to what it is now. There is an existing driveway and paved access and parking in the rear of the property now as well. What we're looking to do is, you know, generally just an expansion of the building, a small expansion of some of the parking area, and then a new standalone structure, which would be primarily for storage. So up on the screen here, I just have a zoomed out view from Google Earth of the parcel now. So this is right on Lewiston Road, generally across the street, actually from the Dunbar Woods townhouses, condos in there. You can see Spring Meadows just kind of at the bottom of the page. So as you're kind of moving up in that sweeping turn as you're headed north. So here's the site plan that we've tried to put it onto an aerial to give a little context and show just some of the vegetation and just land cover conditions that we have here now. We do not have shown, but you can see underneath is just the existing driveway and then paved area to the rear. And then the existing building we have generally shown, it doesn't completely line up from the aerial here, but we have the existing building in this lighter tan color as well. This building, the long way ultimately kind of facing Lewiston Road, but we're certainly set back pretty far currently. There are some existing trees in front of the building now. A few of those trees would be taken down just to make way for a new septic system that we need to be put in to make way for the new expansion. But this is generally the new expansion that we're showing here. At the moment, we're planning for a 28-foot wide expansion closer to Lewiston Road and matching that same length, which is about 123 feet long. You can see off into the rear is the new 44 by 110 square foot structure. This is just going to be like a slab on grade steel frame structure for primarily for storage for a lot of the materials, trailers, things like that, that are already in the paved yard here today that can be placed in there as well. Just in front to match, there will be some expanded parking, just going into this office area for the new building as well. And then off here in this gravel hatch, this would be the other portion of the expansion for this parking area. So this would be able to just to support, you know, additional parking for trailers or just ultimately some materials and things like that.
Ask your book question?
Yeah, please.
What happens between the buildings?
Between the buildings, this is ultimately for, there is some parking against the backside of the existing building. There are a few overhead doors, one here where my cursor is, if you can see this, another here. There's actually a dock well on the backside of the existing building in the rear there. Any deliveries, trash trucks that come through to service the dumpsters in the rear. So this space is generally kept open just for some of those now. So if there is any parking, it's either against the building or just anything off to on the perimeter. So other than that, we're planning for it to be, you know, generally straightforward for an expansion. Jesse's just getting in now, the architectural and building team to get going on that piece here. So we have some, there were some initial renderings that we had provided to you in the packets that kind of show what we're looking at for the buildings here. But there's still, you know, a little bit left to do on that side of things. So some actual building elevations to go along with the floor plans that are pretty well baked at this point, too. For utilities, there's public water here. We're just at the end of the gray water district's public main here. So we're not anticipating any extension to the storage building, but we'll be maintaining that service there. Already overhead service that comes down the driveway and connects to the building there. We're not anticipating much, if anything, for any expanded services for that. There would be some power and perhaps telecommunications, something for maybe some cameras on the storage building. But I think that at the moment, that's really all that building would see for utilities. And as I mentioned before, the septic system, there will be a new septic system that's put in place. It's hard to show on this plan, but if you can see where my cursor is, this is generally where the new septic would be. The idea for that is one, that it was in place of where the existing or the proposed building expansion is now. But also, we've actually upsized that so that can handle up to 20 employees. So kind of thinking about growth for the future here. And certainly when you see some of the floor plans, there's expanded office space and some other space there. So really just thinking about the future for this company here. I do have with me some more slides that are more black and white for everything we had submitted. So existing conditions, the site plans, grading plans, we can talk about that. But I wanted to kind of touch on a couple of things here, too, that Kristin had given us some comments for. And then in no particular order here, we had a comment on the sprinkler. We're still looking into that, whether that's required or not for the expansion here. So now we have the architects and builders on board. We'll get to the bottom of that and what's required and what's not. For the parking, the idea is really that this is just going to be, we're going to be providing what the required amount would be, which is 13. I think we had discussed maybe 20 or more. In reality, there's so much pavement out here and gravel when it's all said and done that, you know, it can support more, but that's not really the intent. So it's more to keep things open so that we can still handle deliveries, the dumpster trash truck that comes through, and then just some of the, you know, other service vehicles, just in an efficient manner. There was a comment about the driveway width. Currently, we're showing it's about 19 feet wide, and I think that sounded like it was maybe not in agreement with what were the original approvals were for the property. So we're certainly open to talking about that. I think that we hadn't shown this on the plan to do any expansion to get up to the 24 feet wide, but we're certainly open to talking about that with you folks this evening as well. On the photometric side of things, not sure if a waiver is necessary or not to be requested, but we're really only planning for some wall pack units to go above the doors for the new expansion and then the doors on the storage building. So these would all be just downcasting fixtures. We had put in a typical wall pack unit in the packet there as well. So just looking for a little bit of guidance as to should we provide a whole, go out to a vendor and get the whole photometrics plan done? Or if this would suffice? Other than that, there was another comment on the hazardous materials. So for this, the idea for this expansion will be to expand, you know, for the future. At this time, there's no, there isn't anything for additional storage or anything like that on site, other than what was perhaps originally proposed. We'll certainly look into that a little bit more. I know I had looked into the standard Kristin had mentioned in the comments here, and there was really just more discussion about increased setbacks from the building or for those storage areas. So I think where the building is located now, Jesse and his team, they certainly are following, you know, all state federal guidelines for storage of any materials. He might be able to talk a little bit more to that point. But I think that there's no other additional stores that we're planning. But it certainly, you know, provides more information, you know, as we kind of talk through that. So I think that was generally it. Probably the only other thing I hadn't touched upon was what we're going to plan for stormwater management here. The idea at the moment, we hadn't had completely designed, but you'll see in our next round submission here. Just to the north of the storage building, we're going to plan a small detention basin up here just to control some of the peak flows just from the new additional impervious area that's on site. Other than that, I think this is, you know, generally a straightforward idea here, just to kind of provide, you know, a new building to the rear, just budding up against the existing edge of pavement, and then expansion of the existing building with a small portion of a new pavement here. So with that, opening up to the board with any questions, happy for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any initial questions?
Yes, so from the existing parking lot, what's happening with the storm water nowadays?
The existing storm water, generally everything, the existing building would be a high point. Everything trends to the rear and sheets off of the parking area and just sheets off into the woods now, generally making its way kind of north, northwest or top left of the screen here or the page towards, there's a small brook that's off property now.
Can you guys divert all this storm water from the existing parking lot into the retention pond?
Yes, it won't be all of it. What we're going to try to do is maintain for the majority of it, the existing grade. So what you'll see is there's a small gray box in front of the proposed storage building. So that would be at a point where we'll actually cut into the pavement, shim up some of the gravels and be able to kind of pitch it away. So not all of that goes into the building, because that's what it would do now if we didn't otherwise. So what I will say is there's probably about half of this parking area that will sheet this way and towards the storage building, and then we'll divert it north towards the expanded gravel area, and then that would find its way into the detention basin. So not all of it will, but about half of that existing parking area.
Thank you.
So I'm looking at the, oh, that's better, thank you. Okay, answer provided, never mind, withdrawn. Thank you.
So no questions for now?
For now, yeah.
Okay, and I don't have any for now. So typically, what I do is ask the applicant if you have anything you disagree with on, from town comments or that you want to talk about. But they're also usually more specific, like things you must do. So I'm going to tonight just quickly walk through them, just because there's a lot of them that needs some input from us. I'm just going to do it a little different than usual. So number one, fire chief, he doesn't have any concerns, so I think we're good there. Number two, performance standards. So in their application, they spoke to the Good Neighbor and Conditional Use standards, which we'll end up approving at a future meeting. And those are on page 10. What's that?
10.
Yeah, 10 and 13 maybe? So Good Neighbor's on 10, Conditional Use is on 13. Did you all have a chance to look those over and have any feedback for them or are they okay? We're not going to vote on it, but if you have issues, now would be the time to let them know so they're not surprised when we vote on them later.
I had a little snafu with my package.
Oh, right.
The first thing that comes to mind is the wall packs, if they're downward facing. As long as whatever light is being added is all downward facing. I know you had asked about a photometric plan. I think I could get my head around not getting a photometric plan if the new lights are minimal and not lighting up the sky. So that would be feedback on that. And then the loss of the trees, I think. I mean, it's an amendment, it's an existing use. Everyone knows that you're there, they don't want to get overkill. But when you're losing some trees that currently buffer a use, it might be nice to see some shrubs or something added and nothing over the top. But whenever existing buffering is lost, it's nice to see it come back in some way.
Does our tree ordinance says that you have to replace the tree if you cut it down?
I don't know.
By the road? When, they used to like number them even. There was a tree management program previously.
Yeah, this isn't really a street tree situation. I'm just expressing a hope that there would be some replacement buffering. I imagine whatever additional square footage here, the nature of your use and whatever you're doing will be similar, and the noise and all that will be not substantially increased by the size.
Correct.
Do you actually, do you do repairs in there? What exactly do you do in the buildings?
Yeah, I think that would be...
Step up to the mic so our vast TV audience can hear you.
Jesse with Miller Refrigeration. So we're an industrial refrigeration contractor. We work for a lot of food and beverage, like Ben &amp; Jerry's, Kev' Cheese, Giford's Ice Cream, et cetera, the Hannaford Distribution Center. And so in the shop is primarily, you know, parts and material storage for jobs that we're doing out at customer sites. And then we do also do a lot of prefab piping in the shop so that we're not always on the job site doing piping, et cetera. So we're welding and fabricating piping systems at the shop and then also go do that in the field at four customers and do service and repairs, et cetera, for refrigeration.
All right, thank you, that's useful.
One more question. So you guys like from the hazardous materials, you don't deal with the ammonia refrigeration plants and you don't store ammonia on the site?
Correct, we don't store it here. We do ammonia refrigeration for the customers, but we don't have any of that on site. We're just doing piping on site.
Thank you.
That's helpful, that's very helpful. I was trying to imagine how a refrigeration company didn't have any refrigeration pool. Makes sense now, thank you.
Shania, anything on the Good Neighbors?
Nope, no, I'm good.
Okay, yeah, and I would echo, I knew it would come up, but the exterior lighting to keep it downward facing, I think that's fine. And then I guess we can kind of wrap buffering in here because it shows up in Good Neighbor standards. There's discussion in the parking about additional plantings. And then our number seven is buffering against Lewiston Road. And I guess with all that wrapped in, I would say my expectation would be that you would, at a minimum, provide landscaping that replaces what was lost due to the expansion. And then any opportunities that you can take. It is a, granted, it's far back, but it is a pretty big building. So I don't know if the better spot is along Lewiston Road or somewhere else. It's maybe up to you to determine what would work best.
Yep, and actually, if I can, I had provided some of these.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
These are just some street views.
Yep.
I think if I zoom in here, this is just a September view, of course. And then if I go to the next, this would be November, what you see now. So I believe the idea is that we're not going up at all in any height. It's really just going to be expansion of that same level in the front. If I can go back one. My understanding of it, just looking at the plan, and we can kind of cross back to it, but like this larger, more prominent tree here on the left side, you know, some of these here, same on the far right, you know, a lot of those would be stamped, might be more just a couple that are in the back.
Okay.
So we can certainly, we'll study that a little bit more and make sure that, you know, those aren't, you know, those trees aren't really truly lost or that buffer is lost. So we can revisit that.
And then in the parking, there's some requirements around landscape border. And I think because you're not at the 20, now you're down at the 13, there wouldn't be an island or anything. So you don't have that anymore to deal with. But, you know, I think on that piece.
Yep.
We always like to encourage folks to, you know, maximize the buffering.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Okay. How about, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just remembered they had another question about the width of the driveway.
I'll get to that.
Okay, never mind, I'll wait.
Okay. How about conditional use? So the, they provided answers to the seven conditional use criteria. I thought they were fine, I don't have any issue with them.
Yeah, agreed.
Shania?
Trying to find...
I think it's on 13.
Oh, my stamp, it's on, yeah, 13 and 14. It's the conditional use.
Not hearing any comments so far, so all good. Okay, so thank you, it sounds like you're going to be good there. When we get to that next time. Water, you touched on sprinklers, so you'll come back with more info there. Parking, does the board have any feedback on the 13 spaces?
I'm inclined to agree when an applicant thinks they need less parking, I am about it, so.
Yeah.
Is that gravel parking lot, is it considered permeable or non-permeable surface?
It's a non-permeable surface, yep.
Yeah, that would, for stormwater purposes, gravel would still be impermeable.
And you're going to be dealing with that stormwater in your next round.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think I'm fine with the 13 spaces, makes sense to me. We touched on hazardous materials. Stormwater, you'll come back next time with your plan there. So I don't think there's much really tonight to talk about unless you had anything additional, Kristin.
No, I was just flagging it, that's going to be an important component of your review when it comes.
Yep, and then buffering, any, I know I made a few comments. Does the board have any additional comments or guidance on buffering?
Nope, I covered it.
Okay. All right, now we're back to the driveway. So it sounds like you have a relatively narrow 19-foot driveway. It's worked for your purposes. It was supposed to be 25. It's not for whatever reason, and the current ordinance would require 24. So to me, it seems like it should be 24. Like, we don't think we need to go back to why it was 25 or not. But it's either 24 or we need to allow a waiver for it to be narrower.
I guess I'd be curious about why is it 24 just because it's of the type of use it is? The fact that they've been, it's been working with such a skinnier driveway? I'm just generally in favor of less pavement. So I'd be, not generally in favor of waivers, but where this has worked, and I'd be curious to know, like, how is it that it's working when it's so much more narrow than what was required?
Probably not much traffic on it, would be my guess.
Yeah, yeah, I would say, I think when you think about the nature of the business, too, there's really only two to three people in the office and more or less the rest of the staff are on the road. So if they're in, they're not exactly opposing each other. They're usually coming in early just to grab materials, things they need, grab their work truck, and then they're out. So it's not a place of business where people are coming in and going, especially at specific times or anything to that effect, so.
Yeah.
Well, I will be wondering, fire chief opinion, like, is this 19-feet-wide road is enough of his equipment? Biggest, potentially even biggest equipment. If it's, he will be okay with it? I don't like waivers either, but I will be perfectly fine with it.
The other thing that occurs to me in terms of, I mean, it sounds like the fire chief was fine with whatever was on the plan because they were asked, right?
That was regarding, I'm not sure that was regarding width.
Oh, that wasn't regarding that, okay.
That was regarding, like, quote unquote, access.
The width of the driveway towards the intersection with the main road was part of the 1992 discussion with the then fire chief and public works director.
Okay.
They had asked for that to be at 25 for the first 75 feet. That's where I'm pulling that from, that's from the 1992 plan.
Okay, all right. I mean, I certainly would want it to be safe by the fire chief. That would be number one. If the fire chief says it should be 24, then it should be 24. But if the fire chief has a different opinion about that and is more comfortable with either what it is now or something less than 24, maybe you widen it with a gravel apron or something like that, I would be okay with a waiver there, only because of the nature of the business. Because this permit is specific to this type of business. It's not like any old business could come in, or is that, is that fair to say? I mean, that would be my worry, is that we allow an expansion and some other different kind of use comes in and that driveway's not right.
And I think, and I think again, what we're talking about is really the throat of the driveway. So, you know, there are, there is a wide enough gravel shoulder coming from Lewiston Road, and then the radii for the driveway itself, I think are sufficient to take in, you know, larger trucks. I'm trying to think of, Jesse, can you speak to, what's the largest truck that you might end up having?
Out to the...
Yep. I think that has worked.
Yeah, we frequently get full 53-foot tractor-trailers with sleeper cab tractors pulling them, and it's never really been any kind of issue, to my knowledge. So I think, like he said, like Caleb said, the throat is quite a bit wider, I would say, than 19 feet. It's just, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the old standard had said for a certain distance down the driveway, it needed to be that 25 feet. I think probably at the road, it may be 25 feet, but maybe not for that full distance down the driveway.
Okay. Kristin, what's staff feel about that one?
I'd go with what you're looking for. I can contact the fire chief and get his input specifically on that question.
Yeah, I think that would be worthwhile to have next time.
Yep, yeah, agreed.
I think, I mean...
And to your point, too, about the use, if that's something you want to put in the waiver language, like that it's specific to this use, and should another use come in, it'd be part of your notice of decision. But that would be up for discussion.
Right, well, if there's a change of use, it would come back to us.
It would, yeah.
I think if it goes that route, I would highly recommend that it be specified as something...
It is very, and my analysis here is very specific to the kind of use you have, where all of your people are mostly offsite. Different.
Yep. Okay, yep, so I think you have some good guidance there. I mean, we talked about light fixtures, so I think our feeling is the downward facing cutoff, avoiding light pollution. Let's see, recommended discussion, I think we've probably covered most of these. So Good Neighbor, Conditional Use, Parking. Oh, Photometric Plan, that's right. Does anyone feel like they need to provide a photometric plan?
Nope.
I would agree with that. Any other feedback?
So far?
Nice to see commercial business expanding, that's a good thing, I like that.
Yeah. Sightwalk. Does anyone feel like they need to see any of this? Does anyone feel like they need to see any of this?
Well, we need to find a rainy day next couple of weeks.
I don't think so. For an amendment, I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think we need that very much.
Sometimes.
Yeah, I think I'm probably fine without a sidewalk. Maybe we reserve the right to ask for one later after we see the stormwater plan and things like that.
Yeah, that is a good question. Stormwater is a really important piece.
Do it whenever we want, but the only other thing might be, like, if we felt like we needed eyes on the road itself, or the driveway, or proposed buffering. So I would say that we should defer discussion about a sidewalk next time.
Agreed.
That sounds good. Okay, any other questions for us? Do you guys have what you need?
Nothing else from me. I think we hit on all the key items. Anything for you, Jesse? No? This was really helpful. I'm glad we can go through these. We had the time to do so. Appreciate it.
All right, sounds good. So as Melinda said, we are very excited and happy to see business expanding in town. So wish you the best of luck and look forward to seeing you back here.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we have no second item, so our last item is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.